Leslie.
My wife was there too.
She's also.
You know. They just left. What's that? Well, I didn't. Well, we did. It's gonna be one of those nights, huh? I'm gonna move back. I'm not, I just say, you said I brought it back. I didn't do anything. I know. I know. Okay. Hey, he's also. We got.
Oh, yeah. I'd like to call this meeting of the planning commission to order. For the attendance, everybody's here except for Chris Norick, who I believe is out of the country, non-business tonight, so. I'm taking over as the vice chair to run the meeting. Can you all stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands on a nation under that indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A big up motion to approve the current agenda.
Do we have a second? Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Article four, do we have any conflict of interest among the planning commission members for tonight's?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you. Article five, I'd like to acknowledge any visitors and those wishing to speak. Commented comments are limited to five minutes per speaker and the comments are not related to the three items on our agenda here for tonight. Any visitors who would like to make comments? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. And we move on to article six, case number twenty-two thirty-seven thirty-seven, Mr. John Postma. Talking about fifty-four seventy-nine Ranger Hills Drive Southeast.
Zoom in a little more. Okay, we have Mr. Postma back in front of us. We had an amendment or they had an amendment to their site plan that came up after they learned where their drain fields are. So on the right here, I have the map that they provided that shows the location of all those utilities on the property. And the proposed garage, the only change that was approved in last month's meeting. Or the only change from what was approved in last month's meeting is that the fifty-foot setback on the west side would be reduced to twenty-four feet. And because of that, we had to bring it back to you guys. It still meets the setback requirements of the ordinance for the height of the building. And the goal for their placement is so that they obviously don't have to relocate any of those utility parts and that they don't have to cut down any of these really old growth trees that kind of characterize the street. So those are the only two changes. I noted those at the top and the rest of my report would be the same from last month. So my recommendation is to approve as presented with the amendments.
Any questions from board members?
I have one. It might be the same. My only question was it's, were the neighbors renoticed?
Yes, yep, it was renoticed. We had one neighbor reach out just saying that they still didn't love the idea of it being there, but that was all we heard.
Was was the change in orientation just to preserve the tree line?
Yes, well, that's what I was told and to kind of stick with the character of it, not just kind of standing out. It kind of, they talked about it making sense with the, how the property looks, so yes.
So it now has a narrower face from the street, but a wider face to the neighbor?
Potentially.
Thanks.
I have a technical question. The colored site plan we have shows DF one DF two, I'm assuming DF one is an older drain field. And the DF two is a newer drain field, is that correct?
Yeah, the applicant might be able to speak to the drain field plan better. I just have it included for you.
Yeah, why doesn't the applicant come on up? Give us your name and the address.
Dustin Carpenter for fifty-four seventy-nine Ranger Hills. Yeah, Drain Field One and Drain Field Two are both still existing on the property and both functioning. And then the diverter rail switches between the two and you can see Drain Field two was originally shown as a big rectangle and the reality is it's a square as you see on the site plan here. It's been located.
That's more accurate, it's on the site plan.
That's a hundred percent accurate. It was, once we started digging, we dug right through the middle of it for the other proposed location. That's how we found it.
Surprise, surprise.
So it's been sitting there with the whole open since for the last four weeks.
Okay, so and then why you're moving the garage over, or is that correct, to carriage house over a bit?
That is correct. And then the orientation was spun because down here, there's a culvert that comes under Ranger Hills. And there's a clump of trees right here that the driveway, we'd have to take all the trees out to stay on the west side of the existing culvert that goes under Ranger Hills and we thought it would look better to preserve those trees. And still come in on the east side with the driveway where it was originally proposed.
Okay.
To maintain the trees.
Free C shaped driveway.
Correct.
Okay. Question for the applicant from board members?
Nothing else? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go to public hearing.
Support.
Who does supported to go to public hearing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Is anybody in the public want to make comments, including those on Zoom? Nothing on Zoom? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded to close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close public hearing. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for case number two-two dash three-seven three-seven for fifty-four seventy-nine Ranger Hills to approve the amended special use permit as requested with the following conditions. The building may not be used for living space or to run a business and any outdoor lighting meets our ordinance standards.
Can you have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Unnoted. You are approved. Thank you. I'd like to now move on to article number seven, case number twenty-two thirty-seven thirty-eight, GDK Construction.
This may look familiar to you all. The applicant requesting site plan approval for of an amendment to an approved site plan for a fifty-five thousand square foot addition to an existing industrial building that will result in a total building size of just over one hundred thousand square feet. And so this site plan was originally reviewed and approved by the planning commission back at July eighteen. The only change being made to the site is that an internal driveway is being removed. That was kind of adjacent to the parking lot. And then along with underground detention basins are also being removed. So as a result of those underground basins being eliminated, the two above ground bases have been slightly expanded to compensate for that. So the increase in size of the above-ground basins was a type of change that the process review committee that we have identified as needing to come back to the planning commission for approval as opposed to an admin approval. So that's why this is back in front of you tonight. So the township engineer has reviewed and approved the revised plans to ensure that it meets our standards still. There was some misunderstanding with the original landscape plan regarding which existing trees will remain. So there are three existing trees along Thirty-Sixth Street that were shown on the original landscape plan that are actually being removed. So they are now being replaced with three new trees and the applicant submitted a revised plan this afternoon that does show that. So there'll be the same number of trees still. So at this time, staff are recommending approval of the amended site plan with the same five conditions that were required at that July eighteen meeting.
Any questions for staff and board members? Not noted. Excuse me, Scott.
I I may have overlooked this, Brian, in the in the report, but originally this went to the, I mean, well, does a project of this size go to the airport for review at all?
I use this into their staff.
Did they see the revised version with the above-ground retention?
There was already above-ground. They're just slightly expanded. So yeah, they've been made aware.
Thank you.
The airport did have a comment, I recall, regarding crane height.
Yep, yeah, that's the one they usually always have.
To limit that, right?
Yeah, that's a common.
Nothing over a thousand feet.
They like airspace over there.
I'd like to see that.
Were there any other comments from the airport? Because number nine states has provided some comments relative to construction permits, landscaping materials and lighting.
I think it's just downcast lighting and then they always, it's their kind of standard comments of crane height, downcast lighting and then landscaping that tries to avoid attracting animals, kind of generic language that they usually have with their comments.
Okay, thank you, Brian. I am Sir Representative from the GDK Construction here tonight. Can you give us your name?
Wanted to talk. My name is John Mail. I'm with Excel Engineering. Chuck Geenan is here also representing GDK Construction. Yeah, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. We had initially designed the plan with a above-ground, we had two above-ground things and we had a big underground storm sewer detention basin in the parking lot. So just looking at some cost-saving measures. We eliminated kind of an existing driveway that was more of a feature when both buildings kind of worked together. And were able to expand the the above-ground ponds to eliminate the underground and, you know, save significant amount of money, so.
Actually, it'll look a little bit better, I think, more grassier in front.
Correct, and so.
Okay, any questions for representative? Board members? Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion.
I can make a motion in the case of two-two dash three-seven three-eight. I would move to, I'd recommend approval of the amended site plan review with the five recommendations noted by staff. And those are providing a bond of the amount of twenty thousand dollars to ensure the enclosed walkway is removed complying with township engineer letter dated July thirteenth, according to stormwater maintenance agreement. The two buildings located on what was five-two-five-one are served by separate utilities and provide a landscape bond of the amount of ten thousand dollars.
It's been moved and supported to approve this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Okay, article eight, case number twenty-two dash thirty-seven thirty-nine, North Point Bank at fifty-three oh three twenty-eight Street Court. Brian?
Right. So here we have the applicant requesting a basic plan review to amend the existing PUD to allow for building additions to the existing office building at that location. So the additions with a total of approximately six thousand four hundred thirty-eight square feet, bringing the total size of the building to approximately ninety-seven thousand four hundred ninety-five square feet. Just a brief history on the property, the site was rezoned to PUD in nineteen eighty-eight to allow for a multi-tenant retail center. It appears there was trouble obtaining tenants for the retail center. So in nineteen ninety-three, the PUD was amended to allow for additional office uses, which it's currently used for now. The PUD ordinance limits the size of the building to ninety thousand square feet and since the additions would exceed that size, that's why an amendment to the PUD is required and not just a site plan approval. The building will still meet the setback and height requirements of the PUD ordinance. The applicant will need to provide a full stormwater supplemental for the township engineer to review and they should also indicate the location of the landscape plantings on the site plan. If there's any plantings that are removed should be replaced. And also if there's any outdoor lighting being proposed in a photometric plan should be provided as well. So this is an introduction phase of the project. If there are any questions of the applicant, this would be a good time to address those. And then the next phase will be a public hearing for the preliminary development plan review, which will be scheduled once the applicant provides the documents and information mentioned in the staff report and the township engineer signed off on the stormwaters in the middle.
Do commission members have any questions for Brian? No. Thank you. Is a representative that can address this? Give us your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Ken Branson, project manager with Progressive Architects and Engineers. Actually do not reside in the township, but I'm here to represent the owner. North Point Bank has been, we've been, have the privilege of working with them for the past several months on this project. And the basis of this project is really consolidating their headquarters operations at this location. So they're closing down some other locations, bringing folks over here, including their executive offices and their administrative offices. So exciting project and one that continues to, I think, use the building well and one that we're excited to need to work with them on. I'm here too with Steve Tietzma, civil engineer with Progressive Architects and Engineers and if there's questions specific to any of the drainage or site items, I'd be glad to field those questions too.
Planning commission members, you have questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this strictly corporate offices or are they going to have a functional bank at the location?
Strictly corporate offices, yeah, no retail banking at the site.
Other questions?
Out of curiosity, do you know how many additional jobs this will bring in?
I don't. We certainly can get that information.
I was just curious.
Scott?
Mr. Chairman, I should have brought this up earlier, but I just realized my, I believe my I don't think this is a conflict, but I just want to put it out in the open. Our office received a call today to do some work at this building this week. So it didn't really go through me, but I see the address and I recognize it now. So I just wanted to disclose that. Same thing, it wasn't through North Point Bank, it was through a tenant or a maintenance provider of theirs, but I just wanted to disclose that.
Thanks for being upfront on that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I'd just like to make a comment as an architect. I think you did a great job on this. That's great. I mean, it's a very tight situation you're dealing with there in the way you made it all kind of fit together and the elevations are really outstanding, I think.
Yeah, thank you. I'll pass that along to the architectural team.
You bet. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
So at this point, since it's just the basic plan review, we don't need a motion. We're just, if there's any additional information we want to see for the preliminary plan, now's the time to mention that. So I mentioned a few items in my staff report of you know, showing landscape plantings, possible photometric plan, and then obviously the entire stormwater submittal. But if there's anything in addition to that, anyone wants to see, we can mention it now, otherwise they'll get to work on those items and come back for that preliminary plan review.
Okay. All right. From that in sort of way. Article nine, review of major street plans.
Yep, so in your packet, I provided some information there. Since the last time this was discussed. So I want to provide a quick update on that. We found a few of the last updates that were done on the plan. There's one back in two thousand. That was the main reason for that was that Forty-Eighth Street was removed because of an airport expansion project, but also as part of that Sixtieth Street was then upgraded to a collector's street between Thornapple and Craft, kind of similar to what we were looking at in this case. And part of the reason for that was there was a road commission project on that, but then also the fact that Forty-Eighth Street was removed. That's why Sixtieth was then designated Collector's Street. Then the next amendment was in two thousand ten. And that was really more of just administrative or not administrative, but just to update the map with the inclusion of M-six and thirty-sixths extensions. So that was just because there are new streets created, so the map was then updated. So didn't really look at any other existing classifications. And then I did find in two thousand sixteen, there's kind of a proposed plan update that staff had been working on and that was more part of a more part of a review of driveway spacing and as part of that conversation, they're looking at the two thousand sixteen update there, but since the driveway spacing was determined to be not with no revisions needed and they didn't end up doing the street update as well, so kind of left it as is. But I noticed on this, on this plan, that sick part of Craft that we were talking at, talking about changing was actually updated to a collector. So they were looking at some of the similar things that we were now. So those are the last few plan updates that we had. And then also there's a few examples of what neighboring jurisdictions are doing that Madison helped find on those. And they have a different kind of range of approaching the topic. So Caledonia simply uses state and Kent County road classifications and don't really tie it to their zoning ordinance in any way. Ada then does provide some definitions in their zoning ordinance of street classification and reference a major street plan. They have a few standards tied to that. So I did reach out to Ada's planning director to give a little clarification on how often they use that or what exactly that looks like. And then Gaines Township has their own definitions and their zoning ordinance of arterial collector and local. And similar to what we have now, they tie a number of their special use requirements that were a certain use has to have frontage on a arterial street and there's some setback standards as well. So there is a bit of range of some people just leave it to the county classifications and some really similar to what we do, make their own street plan and then tie uses to that. And that's one way to regulate land uses is by tying it to your own street classification. And the Michigan Planning Enabling Act does allow planning commissions and townships to develop a street plan for these types of reasons. So I kind of wanted to present that information to you tonight and then see if anyone felt strongly about the direction we should take this, you know, whether it's kind of just amending our current plan as discussed or you know, if you want to scrap it all together in favor of something different and then we can continue in that direction.
One question about the ADA. I just reading through what was given to us. I don't I guess I don't really see where ADA ties their street plan to zoning requirements.
They require in their, especially in the subdivision chapter, I think. For example, new streets have to meet certain requirements that are laid out in the street plan. It was a little difficult. We're trying to find their actual street plan and it was either hidden pretty well or or something. So that's why I reached out to their.
It just didn't sound, just reading through it, it didn't sound as specific as ours currently.
Yep.
Gaines Township is.
Right, I don't think it is. Yeah, I think it's just a few places where it kind of references.
And to make sure that it's addressed and thought about when the planning commission is approving things maybe, but it didn't sound like it was definitely maybe tied to certain ordinance. That's just my observation.
Yeah, I think a lot less loosely than ours and and Gaines.
I don't know if any, I'll voice my feelings just because that's what I do.
That's why we.
And we don't.
That's why we invite you to come.
And we don't have.
You're welcome here. We have no feelings otherwise, that's true.
We might have a different opinion though, after eight o'clock, after eight o'clock, we may.
I thought you meant the one I want to voice. Um. I personally think just because I think when you're looking to, especially when you're making changes, sometimes if the street plan is a completely separate thing that maybe needs to be updated when zoning ordinances are updated, that it might be forgotten to maybe be updated. That seems hard to me to keep the two of them up to date and referencing each other. I personally think the way ADA in Caledonia's seems more appropriate where you have the zoning rules. It talks about taking into consideration the street plan. But there's kind of no reason then to contradict or have to look into places like the example that we discussed at two meetings ago where somebody was looking at purchasing a property. And what they were planning on doing wasn't limited maybe by the zoning, but it was by the street plan. That's just my thought. I think if we're going to limit things, it should be in the ordinance. And maybe the ordinance might address why with streets, but that's just my.
Other comments?
Well, I think the street, my opinion, the street plan dictates what that area should be zoned for, right? Like if the street can't handle you know, multiple eighteen-wheelers going up and down it or it's residential on one half and light industrial on the other. I mean, that's, you know, kids, bikes, basketballs going out into the road. I mean, I I I I get and understand, I think, I feel like ADA and Caledonia don't have, I mean, they've got Amway, obviously, but they don't have as much light industrial as we do. You know, and so they don't have to deal with it like we do, other than.
Yes, it's a Caledonia has to take a bit of industrial, but and they both have huge thoroughfares through their townships.
I. I was gonna say, I think what concerns me about a street plan is similar to the situation we just had. Where there's you know, Bob's company and he wants to build a facility and there's this little gravel road and then somebody looks at the map and says, oh, I'm sorry. That's not the right road for that business. You can't build that there. When in all reality, perhaps there's an avenue for them to upgrade that road and bring it up to the standard and maybe they want to go down that path and update the map. But is that even feasible? I mean, I I just, could somebody, if if our if they wanted to pursue a project and I mean, it doesn't how would you handle that, I guess, Brian? If somebody came in and said, I'm going to build this warehouse here and so all that road isn't shaded the right color on this map that was updated twenty-two years ago. You know, how does, how how would that get handled? You come back to us and, you know, it just takes time, right?
It does. And I say, like, kind of to Wendy's point too, is we do have to stay on top of that. If the road commission does a big project to widen a road, you know, we look at our street plan and possibly amended at that point then, but you know, we can make amendments here to get on top of things where we amend the streets to the correct classification. And then if someone's wanting to apply in a small gravel road, we, you know, we tell them that infrastructure can't handle that.
So this plan came in front of the planning commission in twenty sixteen.
I I believe. I believe it did. Again, it's part of a lot larger conversation.
And prior to that, we don't know how long it had been since it had come in front of the.
Two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten. My concern still is I can look at this map, be like, yeah, it looks pretty good, but if somebody paved a short section of Fifty-second Street and it didn't get highlighted correctly on the map, I wouldn't notice that.
Well, and I think my concern too goes back to that example that we actually had. I don't understand. I guess, just looking at the street, the way we looked at it, especially knowing the businesses on that street are running semis up and down there all day long. I don't understand how that could, I don't like, I guess, the fact that that limited something where it seemed like there was no reason for it. It doesn't seem like it was appropriate where that street can handle semi-traffic. I've driven down that street. The only traffic I see on that street is semi-traffic. And I don't understand then.
How do the other business, do you think they were great? I'm asking a question. Like, do you think they were grandfathered in or how do you?
Well, some, you know, like warehouse businesses don't have that restriction. It's, this specifically was a trucking terminal request has to be on it.
Warehouse down there and all that goes down there is semi-trucks.
So do you think it would be more volume? Is that why or?
I think so. That's probably the idea behind it.
Doesn't make sense to me, I guess that.
That's the problem.
Example that we have.
Right.
All that I see go down that street that I've ever seen that driven behind and I thought it was a shortcut. Semi-trucks. And so I I think that's what's frustrating to me is that we have a plan now. But it's not really taken into this, I don't know.
We're we're use is evolutionary, is. Road use is evolutionary, is it not? What's that? I mean, road use is evolutionary in any setting. And then you have to have metrics to keep up with it. You'd have to have a street plan that would keep up with. I don't know which, which is the dog, which is the tail here. But to your point, road use changes. And people figure out their only own, their own ways to get. Materials from point A to point B, and they're not going to look at this map and deciding how to do that.
Does the map dictate Kent County and how they pile the road, repair potholes, all that kind of stuff?
No, the county can ignore.
No.
Our map, it's more for our land use purposes and there's some setbacks tied to it too with, especially in residential areas. There's increasing setbacks on larger roads for residential homes.
But this, but the state and the county are going to use volume to prioritize the importance of projects and improvements, right?
Yep. And they have their own classifications of our roads regardless of what we say. They do, I mean, they've got their, you know, county, I think county primary, county local, it's kind of two main classifications. You know, what this does is, you know, give us control, you know, where we can change and amend this how we want. If, for example, if you'll use county classifications, then we're stuck with those and we can't amend those ourselves, that's, we're stuck with the county ones, so.
What's the advantage for us being able to amend those ourselves? I mean, what's the? What's the advantage of having the street plan, I guess?
Right, I mean, I guess it it also gives us a stronger response if someone's proposing a development where we don't think it's the right place. Then we can use our street map and say, you know, that's kind of a non-starter where it doesn't allow it there and it gives us that ability. Right, we can always say no, but yeah, it might be a little more difficult or like that.
Perhaps this conversation would be easier if we could see what the county's opinion of our our streets is. And we could compare our current map that's what, six years old, to their map. I'd be curious what the differences are. And maybe at the end of the day, we decide to just adopt their map and we change our, for this, you mentioned our residential zoning and the, you know, we could. Change the wording and that stuff to, to, but but I think we should, I I'd like to see a comparison of what we're, you know, what the alternative would look like. Because if they're pretty similar, I I bet my money, the county is probably going to update the map a little more regularly than we are. Since they're just dealing with roads and.
Yep, yeah, really deal with roads. We can do that. I think that's where I'm stuck. I I like the idea of having a map that's updated for us, but I I appreciate having a map of our own that we could use as a tool in the toolbox to plot as needed. I just want to understand what the system is to making sure our our map is staying updated. Is that a quarterly review? Is like, what does that flow of information look like to make sure we don't miss? Right, yeah, and I don't think we have anything in place right now, which is why this kind of came up out of the, we could easily put, you know, a yearly review and things like that. Yeah, I can grab that county information and do a kind of side by side comparison and maybe make a little pros cons list and bring that to you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else on review of major street plan? No, sir. If not, like to move on to article ten, any old business? None noted. Article eleven, any other business? Just want to mention, I believe our next meeting of the. Ford Airport Study is coming up this Thursday, seven thirty AM.
That's correct.
A very exciting meeting.
We'll have the attorney there to.
He's gonna answer some questions and, yeah, give us some information, so.
Look forward to that.
Yeah.
She did a great job at our last meeting too. Okay, any other business?
No, sir.
All right, moving on to article twelve, acknowledge visitors, none in the room, any on Zoom? Okay, moving right along. Article thirteen, can I have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I forgot to put it on the record that this meeting was done in thirty-three minutes where Chris has taken hour thirty.